Good evening, everyone. It is now 7:00 PM and I call to order the East Point City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We always start our meetings with invocation led by Mayor Potem, Sarah Lucida, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please follow along and Mayor Potem, please lead us.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear God, we ask for your guidance as we undertake the business of the city of East Point. As we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us, help us to lead our community with patience, tolerance, and understanding. We ask that you direct us to do what is best for all of our residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, that participated in the invocation as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna start proclamation for National Day of Prayer 2021. I always read the proclamations. Does anyone want to read this? I always want to give council a chance to be a part of anything. So since Mayor Potem always does the prayers, would you like to read the proclamation for the National Day of Prayer today?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Whereas throughout the history of the nation, in times of plenty, in days of scrutiny, in periods of joy and moments of sorrow, many have turned to prayer, reaching out to a higher being for courage, for guidance, to give thanks, and to seek solace. And whereas the first Continental Congress called the National Day of Prayer in 1775, and President Abraham Lincoln called for National Day of Prayer in 1863. And whereas the National Day of Prayer was established as an official annual day of observance in 1952 by a joint resolution of the United States Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman. The law was amended in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to establish the first Thursday of every May as National Day of Prayer. And whereas the 2021 National Day of Prayer provides an opportunity to pray for our nation, its people, and its leaders, while honoring the commitment to religious liberties and tolerance and the contributes that are continued strength. And whereas, at this important time in our nation's history, we especially pray and remember those who risked their lives for freedom, health, and well-being, and ask for peace throughout the world. And whereas, the theme for National Day of Prayer 2021 is "Lord, Pour Out Your Love, Life, and Liberty", and is based on 2 Corinthians 3:17, which states, "Now the Lord is the Spirit, and where the Spirit of the Lord there is liberty." Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of East Point, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 6, 2021, as National Day of Prayer in East Point, Michigan. It is in commemoration of this event, encourage all citizens to join together in their homes, places of work, and places of worship to pray for the unity of the hearts of all mankind, and has continued to pray for our city, and our state, and our nation. Proclaim this fourth day of May, 2021.
Thank you for reading that.
Mayor, point of order, real quick.
Yes, sir.
I just want to state, I'm not going to sign this proclamation. I just believe that religion should be left out outside of government, so I'm not going to sign this proclamation. Just wanted to say that.
That's fine. We respect that. Even though we always start our meetings with the invocation, we always want to respect everybody's liberties and their religious freedoms, so.
Sure. Yeah, this one's got a specific Bible verse, and at least the invocation is somewhat more general and not to a particular religion, so that's all.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, Madam Mayor.
Also, we need a motion to proclaim this day of May 2021. Is that right, Mr. Albright? We don't need a motion for this?
Not for the actual proclamation itself. I know that there's another agenda item regarding a day of prayer. I think that's under New Business Section M, but for this particular proclamation, a motion isn't necessary, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Well, you don't have to sign it then, Mr. Monaco, councilman. So moving right along to roll call.
Evening. Councilmember Curly?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore?
Here, East Point.
Mayor Owens?
Here, East Point. Thank you, and good evening to you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. I would like to take off item G, approval of Mayor Owens to attend the 57th International Making Cities Livable. We're working, still working on that. And also to add, before hearing of the public, I want to do a present Bishop Lloyd from Rema International Church, because he has the service tonight, and I want to get him on before service. And he wants to talk a little bit about why he would think, why I agree to a possible approval for an outside event at City Hall for National Day of Prayer. With those two changes.
Thank you, Mayor Owens. Actually, I decided to allow someone to teach in my absence so that I can participate. But I want to say hello to city council and all of our East Point residents that are on this Zoom.
Excuse me, Bishop Lloyd, it gotta get approved first and then out. It's okay. This is your second time, second, third time on. Everybody gotta get used to it. It's fine, council.
Madam Mayor, I would like to add an item to the agenda. Item P, and that's approval of Gleaners Meet Up and Eat Up Event this summer.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? Saying none, can I get a motion, please? If not?
Got a quick question for the bishop here. He was going to talk during the M then, when your item about the National Day of Prayer.
Yeah, since he doesn't have to go into his meeting tonight, do you mind going, I'm waiting later on, Bishop? Absolutely. Okay, thank you, sir. So we can go move right on.
Okay.
With those changes, with G being taken off, in addition to item P, approval of Gleaners, then we can add that motion on the floor.
So, Madam Mayor, I will motion to approve the removing item G, approval of Mayor Owens to attend the 57th International Making Cities Livable Conference, and adding item P, approval of Gleaners to meet up and eat up event in Kennedy Park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Okay, motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is hearing of the public. At this time, we invite every resident, guest, visitor to come and speak. You have three minutes to speak at this time with your opinions, ideas, and et cetera. We ask you to be respectful, because this is a public hearing, and all ages are listening, and please be respectful. Now, the hearing of the public is now open. Please let me know who's ready to speak.
Let me see if I see any hands raised. Not seeing anything in the chat. I don't have any hands raised at this point, Mayor.
Okay, well, they have a second chance to speak at the second hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now closed. Moving right along to approval of minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the regular minutes for April 20th, 2021.
For? Motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Next item is scheduled hearings. We have none. We have no unfinished business.
I'm sorry to cut in. I was trying to speak during the public comment, but I could not get myself off of mute.
Okay, well, you have to wait till the second part of the hearing of the public.
When do you anticipate that will be?
That will be closer to the end, ma'am.
An hour, hour and a half?
I can anticipate that. We've been doing, we've been going pretty fast, so. But at any regular meeting, whether we're in person or not in person, we ask not to be interrupting during the meeting. And now that you know how to use the device, we ask that you go to the second part of the hearing of the public. And if you can't wait an hour, can you please email us, starting with our city manager, edown@eastpointcity.org, so we can stay in order as far as the meeting goes. Sorry, my apologies. Moving right along to reports from administration, going to our city manager, Edown. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My report's brief tonight. I'll start out with a thank you to our fire chief, Nick Sage. He's been keeping on top of the sites that we have available for the COVID vaccination. And as of today, he's able to share with us that our local Rite Aid, nearest Meyer, Walmart, and Sam's Club also are providing vaccinations for our residents. So he'll keep us updated, you know, on more sites as they become available, but that's what we have for this evening. And I'd also like to introduce our new deputy clerk, Karen Purcell. I told her she could definitely mute herself and take her photo off, so I'm hoping she unmutes herself and joins us very quickly. Meeting might be going a little faster than she expected. Karen, are you there? Well, she might have stepped away. So anyways, we do have
I'm sorry, Elke, I'm here. I just can't get my video on at the moment, but I'm here.
Well, you're not the only one. This is the second one today. So anyways, Karen, I was introducing you to everyone. I was hoping they'd see your face, but they will soon enough. And if you can, there you are. Say hello to everyone.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
For our council, again, get to meet you. As you see, well, from my screen, Mayor Owens, who started the meeting. We have Sarah Lucido, Cardi DeMonico, we've got Sylvia Moore, and Harvey Curly, and have I forgot anyone else? Normally, we'd have a normal introduction, but because of COVID, we're all so far away. So this is today's modern introduction to new employees. So I do hope when COVID dies down, a bit more folks can come in and say hello in person. So, I'm sorry. Oh, no, I just heard background noise. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Karen, for coming on. And I'm done with my report.
Okay, sounds good. And welcome to the family, Ms. Purcell.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Moving right along. Any questions for our city manager, council, at this time?
Sure, I had one item.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add, if we could, to the next agenda, our next city council agenda, a discussion about the SLAP program. Since we overlooked it when we were looking over the fee schedule, so if we could discuss that at the next meeting, that'd be great.
It'd be great. Or, if I may, would Mr. Blum is on tonight? And when he gives his report, he can certainly give you some updates on that. Will we have to counsel if you'd like those updates tonight, or if you'd rather it go on the agenda?
Oh, we can certainly do something tonight. I'd like everyone to have time before the next meeting in case they have questions or like to propose even possibly a change. But certainly, I'd like to hear like the finances of it, if he had that handy.
He does.
Any other questions for our city manager?
I do have a question. Hold on. I'm sorry, I was getting feedback. Yeah, with the, with the SLAP program, this already taken effect, well, it hasn't taken effect, but it's been placed into our water bills.
Right, a letter has gone out, and we do have all the details for the public and for the council. So, Mr., well, we can go directly into Mr. Blum if Mayor Owens is good with that, and have him talk about the SLAP program.
Sounds good. We have no more questions for our city manager. Also, we have our director of public safety. Any good news? Anything with public safety, we want good news. Good evening.
Well, hello, Mayor.
Hi.
We did catch an individual for breaking into a home this morning. That was good news. Bad news is we had 11 Chevy Malibus. The steering columns ripped out of the cars today. Seems like a group is going around and stealing steering wheels and columns to take the airbags out. It takes two minutes. So if you have a Chevy Malibu, I would park it in the garage till we figure out what's going on. And I just submitted all my crime stats and my monthly performance statistics to the city manager, so you'll be getting them this weekend.
Sounds good. Thank you for your work, and also for the police department, and also the fire department as well. Thank you for putting your lives on the line every day. Any questions for our public safety director? And we have our fire chief as well on here for any questions. Saying, moving right along to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. I have a couple of topics even before SLAP. So the first thing is, I know there was some discussion previously about the police department going in and doing extraditions out of state. I just want to let you know that we received a check from the county for an extradition out of Virginia in the amount of $2,135. So the county actually did pay for it, even though we had to do the work. Yesterday, the Macomb County Treasurer sent out a notice that for the second year in a row, they will not be foreclosing on occupied homes. They will vacant homes, vacant lots, businesses, and any residential, even if it's occupied, if it's a health and safety issue, they will foreclose on those. But other homes will not be foreclosed on in this tax year. So that'll be two years in a row. Our concern is some of these homes are going to become safety issues if they wait too long and keep doing this, but that's the county's call. We can't do anything about it. I'd also like to remind people that May 21st is the cutoff for keeping delinquent water from rolling onto the summer tax bills. So you got a couple of weeks to get things caught up. But just kind of the public service announcement. As far as the SLAP program goes, there was information included in the March 23rd special meeting that showed the history of the program. It was always designed to be a break even. We can't make a profit, but our fees are supposed to cover our expenses. It has been $4 since it was instituted back in 2012. It probably should have been increased to $5 a month a few years ago. This year, we took a look, and we finally were doing a fee schedule, so we increased it to six. The schedule that was there showed that the program itself, over the since fiscal year 2013, was about $300,000 in the hole. And that was just because we were behind on getting the fees increased. So the fee increase is purely designed to get this program back to a break even. What we found out, it originally started because we had sewer laterals causing road collapses. And so we're trying to get homeowners to fix their laterals so that our roads wouldn't be falling apart, and that was a real struggle. So we created the program. What we found out as we got into it was there was more backyard sewers than we had anticipated, and they actually created more problems, which the backyard ones, surprisingly, are more expensive than the front yard ones that tear up concrete. There's a lot of logistics with decks and porches and sheds and all that fun stuff. But anyways, we could talk more even at the next week's budget meeting. I can get that schedule out again, so council can take a look at it and see where we're at, and then go from there. But if you have any specific questions, go ahead. Otherwise, that's all I've got.
Mr. Blum, can you give the residents who are listening, we have a lot of people on here tonight, we have 51 participants, and I'm saying all our residents, but those that may not have the SLAP program, what is it and how is it beneficial for them to get it for $4 extra?
Well, six now.
Six now? Oh, okay. Six now, okay.
I should say, actually, the notice that went out in the water bills was to give people a heads up, because when we created the program, we guaranteed that people would have a 60-day notice before a rate increase. So even though the ordinance was passed, we're not instituting it until July 1st to give the 60-days' notice. What the SLAP program does, it's a service lateral assurance program, and it covers repairs to broken sewer laterals from the house out to the sewer main, and it covers any water service lines from the stop box into the meter inside the home. If any of those break, the city has a contractor that does the work, and that comes out of the program fees. And like I said, it's designed to be a break even. We cannot make profits. But it, the benefit is, people can pay now $6 a month or $72 a year and get a repair covered that might cost them on their own anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000. So the benefit is, you got problems that have to be fixed. If you're not in the program, the city's going to make you fix it, and it will be on your own cost if you're not in the program.
Thank you for that. So anyone listening, if you don't have the SLAP program, please, it's an asset. So please, we don't want you to spend $4,000 or $5,000, and you could have paid $6,000. So any other questions for Mr. Blum?
Just one request, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blum, can you forward out the financial doc you sent about SLAP before, like while we're on the meeting, if you can?
I'm at home. I don't have access to any of that.
All right.
It'll go out tomorrow. Yep.
All right. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Hey, thank you. Moving right along to our city attorney, Mr. Albright. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. A couple of items this evening. The first of which is, city administration has requested that I list several addresses and have those scheduled for show cause hearings at an upcoming council meeting. Possible dates for the near future would either be May 18th or June 1st. There are only five properties that need to be scheduled for show cause hearings. Those properties include 22476 Brittany, 22752 Cushing, 18103 Lister, 22773 Normandy, and 14731 Stevens. Typically, what we have done in the past is schedule show cause hearings for 6:00 PM prior to a regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Do you want us to get that in our schedule right now? I know I can't do June 1st. I won't be in town. But you said May, what was that, May 18th?
May 18th. That does give us enough time to get the necessary notices out to the property owners. Otherwise, the second meeting in June would certainly be okay as well.
Okay, that sounds good. Council, you thinking about the second meeting in June? So we just do the meeting before our regular meeting? I think we usually do that sometimes.
18th or the 15th, that doesn't matter to me. I'm available both.
Okay.
Eighteen works fine for me, too, or probably the other day also. Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, me, too. It worked for me also.
Okay, the 18th.
Thank you. I'll make sure that the necessary notices go out to each of the property owners and any interested parties. Next item I wanted to let the council know about is, I am now registered with CloudGavel, which is a software program that allows the officers in East Point, when they make a misdemeanor arrest, they're able now to submit the complaint and warrant and summons along with a copy of the incident report to our office, and I'm able to then review the documents and, if authorized, electronically sign the documents and then send those back to the police department for further processing. It is a wonderful savings of time, and so far, it's been working out really, really well. Especially helps on the weekends when the officers do send over warrant requests. I can put a more specific explanation as to the program for the council. I can email it to everyone just to further explain, but it's been working out really well. And I know the director's listening in as well, and I know that the officers have been utilizing the system, and I think they're getting accustomed to it.
Yeah, can you email that to us?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will. You're welcome. The next item I had is, this is the time of year to conduct the city attorney evaluation. And so I'm certainly open to when the council wants to conduct that evaluation.
Madam Mayor, I would propose we do the evaluation maybe June 15th. No, we're doing show cause on the 18th.
I wouldn't mind doing it all on one day.
It doesn't, I mean, it's
I wouldn't mind doing it all in one day. Okay, um, what you got, what everyone else thinks?
I would prefer June 15th, just so I have enough time to get all the information out to council in enough time.
June 15th. That is a regular council meeting date, right?
Yes, yeah, it would just be a closed session after if Mr. Albright requests a closed session.
Yes. Trying to get everything out the way in May as much as we could, so we can have some, have some fun in our meetings in June. Have a fun meeting in June. But what other council, the other council feels, you want to do May or June?
I had one quick question. Did we hear from Councilman Curly on that last meeting? I think we heard from everyone but him for, was that good for you, sir?
Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to forgive me. I was just, I got a call that I had a test for the virus, and I tested positive, so I'm not feeling too well right now. But yeah, I agree with the taste, whatever. So excuse me if I don't blur out a lot tonight, which would be which, no, I know would be unusual, but I'm not, I'm just not feeling too well. But yeah. What did you say, Sarah, during the next council meeting?
I suggest that June 15th, so I have enough time to get the evaluation out to everyone, so they can fill it out prior to the meeting.
Yeah, that would be fine. I'm sorry I didn't speak up earlier.
Okay, um, let's go with June. Like I said, I wish we could get it out the way earlier.
Mr. Albright, great work, so.
Yeah, okay. June, what date is that on? June?
15th.
June 15th, okay. Sorry about the news as well, Councilman Curly. We be praying for you. Okay, we got that out the way, Mr. Albright? Anything else?
Just the council's receipt of our monthly status report. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time the council may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Albright at this time, anyone?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have one question for Mr. Albright.
Yes.
When the city renews a lease with, let's say, an organization, should that be being approved by city council?
I would recommend that come before the city council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anyone? All right, saying now we're going right into new business, starting with item A, the bid award for repair work to the fire apparatus base ceiling.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to award the bid to repair the fire apparatus base ceiling to GM Painting Incorporated in the amount of $6,300.
Second. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Item B, bid award for sewer service line assurance program, SLAP. Counselor?
Madam Mayor, I motion to award the contract for the 2021 to 2022 Water and Sewer Service Line Replacement Program to the low bidder, JJ Mish Incorporated of Roseville, Michigan, for the unit prices stated in its bid dated April 13th, 2021.
I'll support that. And then I just had one comment for the residents. This is, we're just hiring the vendor to do the repairs, and this is separate from the, you know, price that we charge each resident to be part of the program.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Moving right along to Topher Avenue Reconstruction Funding Agreement, Counselor?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move to approve the agreement between the City of East Point and the Michigan Department of Transportation for the funding of the reconstruction of Topher Avenue, David to Kelly Road, and also authorize the city manager clerk, city clerk to sign the agreement.
Support.
Motion and support, no conversation, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Item D, the introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve thirteen, counsel.
Um, I guess, Mayor, I'll go first. Um, I just had a general note about this, you know, I've, I've hoped we could just, uh, move forward with putting out the application for the medical marijuana facilities, and I was expecting that all these points would be in the application, um, and not potentially something built into the ordinance. I think after kind of reviewing some other things that, um, other communities are doing, to me, I guess where I'm at maybe now is, I'd like to just see the committee put the points together like they did. You know, we have it in front of us, uh, city administration put the whole point system together, but I think instead of building actual point numbers, like into the ordinance, because you know, if we just want to switch, you know, ten points for this and twenty for that, and flip it twenty and ten, we're gonna have to pass an entire ordinance for a second reading, that just seems, uh, excessive to me, I guess. If, you know, after the first round, we would decide to change it, I guess for me, I'd just prefer, maybe if, um, the committee would like council to approve it, so that they have another set of eyes, uh, approving it, we do something more like, um, other cities have done, where we just like approve it at just one meeting, if it ever needs to change. You know, when the application's released, it'll have the initial points that we agree to. Um, and then after that, um, if we need to make changes, like after, say, the first round of applications, we could do that or something, and it'd just be like one motion of council, we just, you know, by resolution approve, you know, point changes or something like that from city administration.
I actually like that council, uh, put this together, um, because we do have administration and they do a good job. But people have to understand, even though we have administration, what I, what I do like about council is we actually live in the city that we serve. A lot of people that work for the city, and I'm saying they don't do a good job, but, you know, to be heard from people, res- we are still residents here, we're not just people that sit on a council and do legislation, we actually live here. My kids go here, um, I have business here, and so do most of the people on the council. And so as residents, we're, I'm glad that we have a say so and, uh, the legislation part of it, because we serve here, and a lot of times, we depend on other people who don't live in our communities to make choices for us. So I do like, um, the fact that we do put things together, because we actually live here. And, you know, sometimes you put too much into people who, who, um, work here, get a check and go home at the end of the day. And, and not people who actually have to live here and deal with the breaking in and getting Malibu's, uh, stolen out their driveway or their neighbor's driveway. We actually live here, so I think as a resident and as the person that serves on the council, that we should have a say so, and who are, who's coming into our community, I think we should, you know, and not rely on, um, people that, you know, that work here, and I'm saying they don't do a good job, but actually people that live in this community. And I think sometimes we put that on people that don't, that's why, uh, when you're elected, you have to live in the city. Because, you know, you have, uh, you're, you're waking up to a city day by day and dealing with the crime, you're dealing with the school system, and you're dealing with the businesses that come in the city, not the people that work here and leave. So, that's just my, that's my, um, two cents.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question for Mr. Albright about this, and I was just wondering why, why he was recommending that we put it in to the ordinance, if there was a reason for it?
This is a recommendation of city administration. Um, I believe Ms. Holman is, uh, in on the call, I don't see her on my screen, but, um, uh, Ms. Holman and other, uh, members of city administration have been working on, uh, the administration portion and getting the application together, and this was a recommendation, uh, from, uh, city administration, uh, that city administration believed it would benefit the community having, uh, this kind of language, uh, in the ordinance itself, as opposed to, uh, on just the city website or on the application itself. But again, this is a, this is certainly a council decision, uh, it doesn't affect the legality of it all, whether, uh, that language is actually in the ordinance or in some other location, as long as applicants, uh, uh, have access to the language itself, so they're able to review it and read it and know what it, uh, includes. Uh, but again, this is, uh, this is a, a council decision, uh, which is coming at the recommendation of city administration.
Alright, well, well, thank you for that. Um, yeah, because I, I agree with Councilman DeMonico, I think I'd rather do this in like a resolution form. Maybe they could write it up in like a resolution form and put it on our next agenda, and then we could, you know, move forward approving it there, and then keeping the ordinance the way we've already have it approved, instead of making additional changes, do it again.
Um, ma'am, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, I, uh, I agree with having a residence, you know, with us being residents here, and, um, wanting to have our city a certain way and, and, and be able to make intelligent rulings of our city, because we live in our city and we are affected by the things that happen in our city.
I agree.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As far, as far as having an ordinance or, um, whichever way, I, I, I guess I'm at a position now, as long as it gets done, let's get, let's get it done and get this whole train moving, and, um, as far as people having, um, first consideration or more consideration, whether they live in a city or not, you know, that, that, that's gonna be depending a lot on their, their background, or whether, you know, personal background or financial background, but, um, I don't, I don't really care if it's an ordinance or whatever we done, let's just get it done, and I'm not saying we're really far behind, but we are behind. And, uh, let's, let's get the train moving, and so we can start understanding where we're at.
In respect to people who put this together, and also the administration that put this together, and the attorney that we paid to put this together. I think we should just go right along and introduce the first reading, and that gives, um, not only the residents, but also council enough time. If they wanna, uh, residents, uh, want to say something about it in the next reading, or think, uh, we should or shouldn't, uh, submit something in this reading, it just allows, uh, residents to have a say so, and what, uh, they want to see in legislation, and give us, uh, their feedback. But, um, Counsel, if you want to do the motion, we can move right along.
I mean, if, well, if no one else is gonna motion, at least try, we can, maybe it'll be, end up trying a couple motions here. I, uh, I motion, let me, let me get this straight real quick here. Yeah.
Real quick, before you try making a motion, I do have one recommendation. Um, if we're gonna try making a motion on this tonight, I would really like to maybe have included in a motion, um, like a date, if we could vote on like a date tonight, on when we might start accepting some applications. I don't know if that would be possible.
Think, uh, yeah, is this the last outstanding thing, correct? I guess is what Ms. Lucido's asking?
Yes.
Mr. Albright, can you answer that for us?
He, as far as I know, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the, uh, the last change or proposed change to the existing, uh, ordinance language. Uh, Elke, I know you're on, um, are you aware of any other, uh, uh, any other possible issues out there?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, yeah, I could preface just my motion by saying, I certainly don't want to throw all this language out. I was just saying that, um, it could be included in the application, and any changes to it would just be by council resolution. So I, I would motion that, uh, we direct the city attorney to take the portion out of here related to the points for the application, and draw it up as a resolution where we can approve the points, and those items are therefore then included in the application for applicants of medical marijuana facilities. And that we set, what was the date? We set a date here that applications will be available by. Guess how long do we think we'd need then, uh, city administration?
Is that a motion or a question?
I guess, I had a question, I guess, in the middle of my motion.
Where's the question going to? I was in, okay.
Well, I'd say, I mean, Ms. Doom or Ms. Holman, I, I think, I mean, it seems like a lot of folks on council are hoping we can set a date for when these applications would be available, can it be a month after, I guess, whatever is approved by city council, be it my motion, be it, uh, you know, the other motion for a first and second reading?
Yeah, I think that's very fair, yes.
Okay, alright, so I'll just quickly, very quickly, restate my motion then, that, uh, we direct the city attorney to take out the parts in this first reading here regarding the application and the points for the application, put it into resolution form for city council to approve, and then, uh, once we approve that resolution, one month after the applications will be available for people to apply for medical marijuana facility licenses.
I will support that motion.
A motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Mayor Owens?
No. Moving right along, uh, appointed by city manager with concurrence of city council to the Downtown Development Authority Board, Ms. Doom? I think you had, uh, certain people that you want to.
I am on mute again. I would like to recommend, uh, William Transit from the Detroit Furnace with a term expiring September first, twenty twenty-four. Shall I read all three of them, or would you like to vote individually?
You can do all three of them.
Okay, the next one is, uh, Tanitra Morrison from Classic Closet with a term expiring September first, twenty twenty-two, and then Joseph Solomon from the UPS Store with a term expiring September first, twenty twenty-three.
Madam Mayor, uh, I would move, uh, uh, on the recommendation from the city manager.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. What I'm noticing on here is, uh, thank you, what I'm noticing on here, um, excuse me, I just found this out. Um, Ms. Doom, I thought we were supposed to have the beautification appointments on here, so we can appoint people for the beautification, I don't see it on here.
No, I, that's not mine to put on, Madam Mayor. Um, I believe we've, uh, Otis has sent you everything on folks who are interested in serving.
Yeah, I thought he added it on here, so we can go ahead and get that for us, so they can have a, um, a quorum.
Right, right, no.
That's why we asked for it, and, uh, Miracle Tim gave me the, the list of people for the application, so they can have that moving forward.
You'd like to send that to Otis, he'll definitely get it on the next agenda for you, of the names that you'd like to add.
When is their next, uh, meeting?
Let's take a look.
There it'd be May twenty-seventh.
It's twenty-seventh, we have a meeting before that.
Yeah.
We do have a meeting before that, so we can just.
It's on May eighteenth.
Okay, sounds good, so they have a quorum by then, okay. So, yes, please put that on, I thought that we could do that today, so they can get all acquainted and email sent out and things like that for people who are appointed. We get that together next meeting, thank you. Okay, um, yes, sir.
O- one quick thing, I see Mr. Transit on the call, I don't know if you wanted to have him introduce himself, and I don't know if either of the other applicants are on here, I was trying to look through my list, uh.
Oh, you're good, uh, Mr. Transit, we'll put you on the spot, if you'd like to join us, say hello.
How's, how's everybody doing?
How are you?
Thank you, uh, uh, William Transit, uh, Detroit Furnace, I, uh, we've been in East Point now for four years. Uh, we're located on Nine Mile, right, uh, down the street from the police station. Um, love the city, you know, I'm not a resident, but I love the city and, and, uh, I hope to, hope to be helpful, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for investing in our city and being a part of the, you know, our board. Um, anyone else that is on here that's, uh, that's been appointed tonight, thank you for being a part of that. We're gonna move right along, um, to the approval of purchase for ten tactical vests and templates, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the purchase of ten ballistic vests and ten ballistic shock plates from TYR Tactical in the amount of seventeen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
A second. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Moving right along, skipping G's going to H, the approval of special event application, Eastwood Oddfellows Grashit Cruise Car Show.
Madam Mayor, I will motion to approve the special event application for the Eastwood Oddfellows Grashit Cruise Car Show, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Ma'am, do we, do you want to, um, speak on that?
Do you have anyone from the Oddfellows here to speak on this?
Um, I can speak a little bit on it, if you would like, Madam Mayor.
If you.
So, they're looking to just use their parking lot during the Grashit Cruise, they're gonna have some food available, they're gonna have a DJ out there, um, they have restrooms inside and outside, um, they've done this in the past, there's never really been any issues with it.
How many people do they anticipate being, um?
Um, usually, there's probably the, you know, the most, I would say, fifty people there at one time, if that, usually probably around twenty people at a time, because people kind of come and go.
Yeah, it's not that many people, and they can, um, pretty much have more control than we have, you know, in the street and the city. They have more control in, comes in their parking lot.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and they're making sure they, they're gonna follow all of the, you know, state health department recommended guidelines.
The only thing with the whole, uh, Grashit Cruise, might I add, was, you know, because I know we, uh, with the CDC guidelines and, uh, with the governor, they were saying no more than a thousand, correct?
Correct.
So I see that we're having a whole bunch of special events in that area, plus our Grashit Cruise, you, I don't think that's gonna be over a thousand people.
Well, sure, Madam Mayor, I think that, that was my concern, we talked about the Grashit Cruise as a whole. I was just going to say, and I don't think there was a second, uh, but I, I'll support this if there wasn't. Uh, this one, estimated crowds fifty, and assuming, you know, there's social distancing and, well, and masking up might not even be a recommend, you know, I think the CDC now has said outdoors, um, uh, masks are potentially not, uh, required any longer if you're all vaccinated, but of course, they don't know if people are, I highly recommend still masking up. But, um, I was just going to support this one, because this, because I, I, I was just trying to bring up the different parts of the cruise before, where there's gonna be more or less people, or, you know, higher risk. This one, at least I believe, would be then lower risk, which is fifty people in that, um, uh, in that parking lot. So that's, that's why I'm supporting this specific, uh, special event application.
Yeah, because it can be more, um, controlled than people who come off the street, so.
Any more questions on this council? So let's go ahead and, um, get a motion, I don't think we got a motion.
Yeah, the motions I made in there from.
Yeah, motion and support, Mayor.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Next item is the, uh, pool of special event. Next item is the, uh, pool of special event application for East Charity Car Show, June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Counsel?
Thank you.
Councilmember Curly? Thank you.
I had myself, I had myself on mute, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, uh, mute all right. To approve the special event application for the East Charity Car Show for June sixteenth, two thousand twenty one.
For.
Is this the same scenario is, or is there someone to speak on this?
It's the same scenario as, um, this is a parking lot and correct, same way as.
This event is not on the same day as the cruise. Like, this is a separate car show that they want to host the week before the cruise. So we don't even have like the large crowd that's gonna be coming to the cruise. It's just gonna be there coming out to this event. I think they're estimating three, a hundred to three hundred people.
Yeah, it is. That is correct. Madam Mayor, it's gonna be held at the VFW Parking Lot on Nine Mile Road. The reason ease is putting this out there, as we all know, and supported enthusiastically is the sculpture that, uh, they're gonna be installing at Kennedy Park. And we all remember that the cost to do this is thirty thousand dollars. Um, we don't know how much they're gonna make at this car show. With my, uh, twenty-one experience of having involved in different car shows during the week, I would suspect there may be, if you count the drivers, there may be between seventy and eighty-five cars there that night. And I think it's gonna be between four and eight o'clock at the VFW Parking Lot. There'll be food inside, uh, the VFW Hall. I would suspect if you want me to round a figure off and covering the drivers and people there, probably two to three hundred. You know, two to three hundred, you know, somebody's gonna leave, somebody comes back in. But, uh, I, I'm suspecting between two and three hundred, hundred people, but this is an, this is an endeavor by, by the group to try to reach that thirty thousand dollars so they can get that sculpture uh, installed at Kennedy Park and make us all proud.
Okay. Any other questions?
There's one quick question, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for liability insurance, we always require that with the special events, is the VFW then providing that certificate that names the city of East Point or, or how's that working? Does anyone know the answer?
Um, i- if I may, um, this is Shelley Chop. I'm, I'm involved with this as well as the VFW Hall. Um, because it's an event at the VFW Hall, we would be covered under their, um, ongoing coverage as far as insurance goes to host events. Um, they rent out the hall and the parking lot. That's part of their business. So it would pretty much be kind of like renting Athena Hall for an event or, you know, something like that. Um, also, I, I wanted to mention that the parking lot itself is almost a city block long. So there's plenty of room for spacing out and, and keeping your distance from other people.
That's true. I've been there a couple times. Any other questions on this? Counsel? I get a motion?
Uh, I, I think I did make the motion, ma'am.
Did I get support?
We have.
Mayor.
Thank you. Motion and support, call the row, please. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
May, or, excuse me, Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Moving right along, discussion and possible adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty-three. This was brought on by the city attorney, Mr. Albright. Mr. Albright, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, this resolution was actually requested, uh, by the, uh, library, uh, board. Uh, the language that is contained in the, uh, uh, proposed resolution this evening has been approved by the, uh, the library board. And, uh, the library, library board is requesting that the council approve this resolution so this language can be on the November ballot.
Counsel?
And, um, Mayor, I'll motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash nineteen two-three to add ballot question language for the library millage renewal proposal.
Word. Second.
Motion and second, please call the row.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Moving right along, uh, I think we had Ms. Todd on here. I think she left, but I want to congratulate her on the new position. Um, she has done a lot of work and she deserves it and she has, um, run a lot of programs, new programs to, to the library and she has a lot of fun doing it. And so I'm gonna, uh, say, uh, thank you and congratulations to your new title. Um, again, moving right along to item K, discussion on lawn maintenance contract. So we're gonna talk. Please, uh, let's talk about this with, uh, our city manager, Ms. Doom. Ms. Doom, have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, our assistant city manager, Mariah Walton, has been working closely with our lawn maintenance folks, which is Marino's, and she has some information she'd like to bring for you tonight and some issues that we need to get through. Um, I don't want to all say COVID-related, but definitely plays a part in it. So, Mariah, if you would, please.
Sure thing. Thank you. Um, so we initially met with Marino's, um, in the beginning of April, just to touch base, um, in regards to service for this year. Um, they reported to us at that point, they were gonna have some trouble, um, completing the code enforcement piece of the contract. Um, so the code enforcement, uh, through the bil- building department. Um, we've tried to work with them to allow them to subcontract. That's been unsuccessful, um, in terms of wanting to the, not an agreeance of like changing the rates, which we're not permitted to do, uh, based on what council approved in the initial contract. Um, so they've reported inability to complete that piece of the contract. Um, I've also talked to Ms. Homan, who manages all of the tax reverted lots and properties in community. Um, and those, uh, lots have not been serviced either. So we actually have two pieces of the contract that are not being completed at this point. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Albright. Um, he has some options, um, for council to consider to move forward with getting those services completed this year.
Mr. Albright, thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Albright, I see you have, um, additional, uh, options to move forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Yeah, I've reviewed the, uh, the contract, uh, between, uh, this particular, uh, uh, vendor and the city of East Point and, uh, it's my opinion that, uh, the, the contractor, uh, is in breach of the, uh, contract. I know it's given its, its various reasons for that, but, uh, it's certainly in, uh, breach of that. So the city could, uh, declare this contract as being null and void and hire a, a different contractor, uh, for all the services. It could keep the contractor on for what services it believes it can continue to perform. And then, uh, contract with another company, uh, that, uh, seems to be provided for in section. It's on page three of the contract. Uh, where it says the city reserves the right to correct or complete any work that the contractor fails to perform in accordance with specifications and deduct the cost of this work from money owed to the contractor plus ten percent. So there's that, or the, the contractor could be sued for breach of contract by the filing of a breach of contract lawsuit uh, in the McComb County Circuit Court, uh, seeking money damages for whatever damages, uh, the city has incurred. So those are some choices, uh, that the city has available to it under the circumstances. I don't know if, uh, anybody from, uh, Marino's, uh, is, uh, present, uh, at the, uh, tonight's hearing uh, to take any questions from the city council or city administration. Um, but, uh, yes, Ms., uh, Mariah Walton has been, uh, talking to me about this and I know city administration, uh, is concerned because, uh, the city certainly needs to have a contractor who is ready, willing and able to, uh, uh, cut lawns, especially as the summer months approach.
How we can, uh, put this, we don't have enough time to put this out to be it. And while we're waiting for it, we don't have anyone in the city that can do this work. When a contractor, um, can't do the work, we don't have a city employee from DPW that can do the work.
Yeah, I did, city administration on that question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, that's what I'm asking, Ms. Doom, Ms. Doom.
Yes, I, I'd be happy to answer that. Some of the, um, concerns that we have are if we, uh, were to, you know, make this, call this contract null and void because they're not able to complete the entire contract. We go out to bid, uh, it does take a while. We award it to another company. We've got weeks that our grass will not be cut in the highest growing season there is. Um, there, Marino's is able to do the majority of the work. They simply cannot do it all. Uh, some of it has to do, as we, we're all aware, that people are having trouble hiring, uh, employees. Primarily part-time employees. It doesn't matter what industry it is. So we recognize that there is an issue that may be somewhat, uh, beyond their control. I have spoken with, uh, Mr. Pallucci. We have no equipment uh, that we could send our, our own staff out and say, okay, let's just keep this going until we go, you know, out for bid and we get a new company. Uh, another concern that we have is that most of the landscaping companies already have their, uh, work lined up for the summer. This is the height of the growing season, you know, eh, end of April, May. So we're a little bit concerned that as we're going forward, looking for someone else, we're going to have grass around the entire city that is uncut and could be up to a foot or more higher before we do find someone. Those are just some of the possibilities and some of the issues we've talked about. So, um, you know, nothing's perfect, but our recommendation would be to continue with Marino's. They're able to do most of the work and allow us to contract out with some local vendors that we've used in the past to handle the, um, tax reverted properties and code enforcement properties.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I have a question for administration. Um, before last year in approving this contract, the way we did our grass cutting, I believe, was like in multiple contracts for like different, um, we would bid it out in like different areas, like code enforcement would be one. Um, I was wondering if, if we do get, I agree, I don't wanna put this out to bed because I don't want our grass to get a foot high in our parks. I mean, I, I think we need to keep our city looking nice and, and I understand why administration's making that recommendation, even though that they are breaching their contract. Um, but at the same time, moving forward, I think maybe we might need to look at this differently.
I, I agree with you completely. This was, um, put into effect last year. Our assistant city manager, who was also in charge of contracts and procurement, felt that he could find a savings to the city by using one vendor and we're finding it's not as successful because it is quite, uh, it's quite a lot to cut. We're a small city with a whole lot of grass. So, uh, we definitely, after the season has come to an end, we need to take another look at how we've done it in the past. Is that more successful and then go forward with that?
I just, um, it just bothers me as a city, if a contractor backslides, we don't have our own equipment to do our own work for our own city.
Great.
So now we have a contractor that, uh, tried to, uh, um, sub, um, subcontract the work that we gave to them and couldn't find the work. And now we're still allowing them to work for us when they promised us something that they couldn't deliver. And, um, again, as a city, the, uh, the residents pay their taxes to make sure these things are done, not based upon contractors, it's based upon the city that they pay their taxes to.
Right.
So I was just wondering, is there a way, um, we can have something, you know, something backup where if this happens, we can cut our own grass until a bid comes out and still save money. Because if we had, DPW had the equipment, we could have saved a couple hundred thousand, uh, dollars until we get out, to get a new bid. And we don't have the equipment.
No, we don't. We had equipment in the past, but it was quite old and, uh, pretty worn out. And, uh, the city manager at the time, a former city manager directed, uh, Public Works to sell the wet equipment that we had and just dispose of it because it was very old and it was not replaced. So that's unfortunate, our, our end, that we, it would be good to have some equipment available so that we have our, our, you know, emergency cut if we need to, but we don't at this time.
Counsel, what do you think about that? Um, possibly because our budget is coming up. Mr. Pallucci, want to think about putting in a budget to have some cutting equip, some, you know, lawn cutting equipment for, um, for the city just to have. It might save us, it will save us some money on certain areas that we don't have to bid out, that the city can do, and we bid out other areas. Save us a couple, uh, hundred thousand dollars, I believe. If council wants to look into that. I know the budget is coming up. I'll probably think to talk to, uh, our DPW and thinking about doing that.
Well, Ma- Madam, Madam Mayor, if I might, um, suggest, and suggest enough, putting that in a budget and getting, um, lawn mowers and whatever they, that's, that may help us in the future, but I think right now we're, we're in a pickle. And we have to react to this pretty quickly. And, um, yeah, there was some disappointing things that's happened to this contract, but the fact remains, we've got, we've got to be able to get those places mowed and quickly. And with the rain and weather we're having, it needs to be done once a week and we're gonna, we're already gonna be behind. So.
Yeah.
If they, are we getting, did I hear, uh, a recommendation from this administration that we keep the contract and, uh, that we what, go off, go out to get a?
Subcontract that, that we bring in for some portion of it. Marino's will do the majority of the work. They simply have stated they cannot do it all. So, um, we have to bring in some local contractors.
I don't know what, but, okay, I don't know what that means. That's so subjective. They said they can do most of the work, but not all of it. What does that mean?
They, uh, have stated that.
They, they can do nine out of the ten lawns. They can do twelve out of fifteen. I mean, we gotta get more specific. So what does that mean? We, we go out and hire somebody, says, we, we got ten places that need to be mowed. And then you find out, well, no, no, we, we can do all but three. So we're not, I, I, I don't see any specifics there as well.
They have stated that the code enforcement lots, as we go out and ticket for high grass, they cannot absorb that additional, um, cuttings. We do have quite a bit because we have a lot of homes and also the tax reverted properties that we have. Um, although they're not that many, they are unable to support enough staff to bring out for that. But other than that, the areas we have throughout the entire community, uh, our park system, our, you know, our city hall, all of our lots, they're able to do all of that. That's what I mean by the majority, uh, but they have indicated they cannot do, uh, code enforcement because that comes and goes depending on how the code enforcement officers go out. So it's not, uh, you know, a given every week that they need to go out to a particular property. But I will ask, uh, Ms. Walton, do you have any additional information that you could share with the council? As to what they are able to do or not able to do for us?
Yeah, the code enforcement is vendor managed, so it's up to them to manage, um, and kind of monitor those properties, um, and then cut them and then bill us as they do that. Um, they are unable to do that, um, and have reported an inability to do that. Um, we've noticed in going out to review the community that the tax reverted lots, um, and homes that we have are not being cut. Um, but that also kind of puts us in a bind. If we are out doing code enforcement, we also have to keep our grass and our properties cut at the same time. Um, the medians here, um, in, in, on Grashit and Kelly Road, those have been cut. All city buildings have been cut and there's been no issues um, anywhere else in the contract at this time. It's just the, uh, code enforcement. Um, and then the tax reverted properties and lots that are not being done.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, counselor.
I think then if, uh, I'd like to just, uh, briefly, I guess, uh, go back to like what we've done in the past. I know we've got a lot of new people, you know, in city administration. We did have the, um, the contract split into like four. We did, you know, the DDA was one section, medians were one section, city properties were another section, and then any properties code enforcement deemed. And before it was our own code enforcement. I know we talked about this pretty recently where I, I was against that whole idea anyway, and maybe this is a good transition here back to our city code enforcement, looking at these lots and marking them off as opposed to our own vendor marking them and then cutting them, uh, that would reduce the work on the vendor. Um, there's those four sections and then we also changed parks. So the parks, uh, mowing then in this last iteration was included in the cutting too, but that used to be part of the, the full parks maintenance project. So we essentially have five different areas. I guess, Councilman Curly, with your question, which I think is a very good question. Areas, I guess, Councilman Curley, with your question, which I think is a very good question. What do they say they can do? I think we should split it in that five. If, um. Merinos can do two of those five or three or whatever they are able to do. I say, you know, make sure they are able to do it. Have them do those and then we should go, just go back at the list we have from just a year ago and I, I talked with. Uh, you missed Doom about some of this yesterday, um. Just see if we can call some of the vendors that just bid last year since we're in a pinch here because, I mean, my lawn's already been cut once. It, it's gonna be tough, I think, to find anybody, so we might as well start with them, give them a call as soon as possible. Um. Going out to bid, I think probably for this year is frankly just too late because I, I don't know if anyone's even gonna bid. By the, they're already gonna have their full, full schedules. So I guess I'd like to just see, you know, Ms. Doom, you can just use like your emergency manager powers to make sure we do get everything cut ASAP. And then I wouldn't mind seeing something like that where we just split it back into five sections or something and. It could be a different vendor for each section and that's brought back to city council. I guess that's at least how I feel on that.
Mad- madam mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm sad, I'm satisfied with, with Cardy said, uh. Let's, let's cut to the chase. Uh, we'll get him to, we'll get our contractor to tell us exactly what they can do. Okay, what we, what have we got left? We'll have, uh, assistant city manager, whoever call people that we had last year. And, uh, hire them to do that and. End the problem. Let's do it. Thanks, Cardy.
I don't think that's in the problem, but, um. It's a, uh, it helps. Uh, with the solution, but it might not be the solution to the problem, but, um.
It's a solution right now.
Moving forward, uh, Ms. Doom.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I want to say that, uh, with the Merinos not being, um. Not doing the contract like they should, do they, do we get like some type of discount from them? Because, you know.
They, they charge us as they cut. Uh, so it'd be, it certainly would be less because we're paying them to do less because they're not able to do more. So, uh, we're not going to lose money on this. We certainly need to bring in at this point. Some other help that will be of an assistance and I think, do I see Sarah's hand up? Is your, has your hand been up or no?
Well, yeah, I just had, I had a question for you when you're done.
Okay, I, I thought it was up there for a while.
Yeah, because I was, because usually when you do a bid, it's, it's based upon a group.
Yeah.
To get the lowest rate. So if you're splitting it up. And you're still getting paid half, that's not. The right rate.
Uh, if, if you'll give me just a moment. Mariah, if you would please explain how their bid, uh, was presented and how it was accepted.
Sure, um, so they did bid in, in separate sections. So as, uh, Mr. Dematiko had mentioned. Um, the lawn bid was bid in different sections, but was awarded all in one. So Merinos got all of the services, which included the parks. Um, the city buildings, um, our tax reverted lots. Whereas comparable to like the snow service, we kind of split those up where the parks. Um, has a different vendor compared to like city buildings. Um, so that is something that we could do moving forward. When we do put the lawn maintenance contract. Um, back out, we don't have to do an all in one bid and we could award to, um, separate companies. I'm not sure, we'd have to defer to Mr. Albright in terms of how that would look in terms of taking two pieces away from the previous contract from Merinos. And if we needed to amend the contract, um, and then kind of leave those, the tax reverted. Piece of the contract and the, um, vendor managed code enforcement piece out, he would probably know better and moving forward to make sure that. There is no contract documentation with Merinos that allows them, whenever they feel like it, to pick back up with, with that service.
Okay, that sounds good.
Madam mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Uh, Mr. Albright did say that we have the option. Um, with the city reserve the right to correct. Or complete any work, um, that the contractor fails to perform in accordance. To the specifications and deduct the cost of this, um, work from the monies owed to the contractor. Plus 10%. So we do have that option. Because we would have to go out and contract with new contractors to do the. Additional work that they can't get to. We can actually, um. Use this part in specifications. And deduct the cost of the work that we have to pay to someone else, plus 10%.
That makes sense, even though they just, uh, read that. I'm glad you read it again because somebody's paying attention to something I just said, um. If someone sends a contract. And doesn't meet the specifications of that contract. And we have to go out and bid, they should do something for us to save us some money. That's all I'm trying to say.
Yes, correct.
And we should enforce that.
We should enforce this. Yes, we should.
If it's a writing, let's enforce it.
Yes, let's enforce it.
Thank you, councilwoman, for, for, for restating that, that the policy that was written before we got here. Okay, I will, I will move along with this. So we can move right along.
I just had one quick question for Ms. Doom.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Are you looking for any action from council on this item tonight?
Uh, not really. Uh, we just simply, you know, if you wanted to. Uh, kind of null the contract and void it out and go out for bid, then that is something that we, we'd need a. You know, direction from you. But other than that, as Mr. Dematiko had mentioned, I, I certainly have the ability to go out. We are, believe in transparency, so we'd rather bring it to you. Explain where the discrepancies are and the ability of Merinos to, you know, fulfill the contract. And just have you in our community be aware that we are going to. Need to make some changes very quickly so that we can get everything cut.
Okay. I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying when we, uh, put a contract together and someone doesn't do what we asked them to do in a contract. We need to, we need to have, use our power and what's stated in the contract and saying, what are you gonna do for us since you're inconvenienced and our, our residents? And I don't like when people, I don't, I'm not saying this is what happened, but I don't want companies and contractors signing contracts. And not, you know, upholding to what they say they're gonna do and we're still paying them regular price. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
So, um.
And is Mr. Albright have, uh, do you have a suggestion on just a motion then for us regarding? Contract now?
Yeah.
Well, I, I thank you, uh, Councilmember Dematiko. I think that the motion would be to, uh, continue with, uh. The existing contract to the extent that, uh, Merinos, uh, is, is willing and able to, uh, provide services. And for those, uh, uh, requirements that they're not able to provide services, that Ms. Doom can use her powers to, uh. Use another, uh, uh, company to provide those services. And then what I can do is get together with both Elkie and, uh. Mariah and, uh. Look to see how this is going to, uh, and also with, uh, with Randy to see how this may affect, uh, the city from a financial standpoint. And if there are gonna be any excess costs to the city, uh, having to go this route and if there are excess costs and damages. Uh, seeking, uh, recruitment from, uh, Merinos for those costs.
Perfect. Perfect.
Yes, could actually use the clause that we have written up.
Hey, um. I think, uh, Councilmember Monaco, I'm gonna take that motion. You wanna take that motion? That, all those words he just said.
Um. Yeah, Mr. Albright, can I just say, so moved on what you explained?
That would work, yes. It's being recorded, so there's, there's a record of what was stated.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Need that support, please, for. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dematiko?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Discussion on Quick Clinic. This is something I put on here. I'm gonna make it very brief, um. John Daly, he is the CEO of, uh, Quick Clinic. And, um, I know we are, um, trying to get some, back to some type of normalcy here at East Point and we have a lot of events coming up. And he was, uh, he was, uh, he's not on here. He had a lot of things to do, but. I'm reading, um, an email from him. He was saying that he can provide up to a hundred vaccines. At East Point, um, if they, if we provide them a location and I was thinking. City Hall, um, the fire chief Sage said that, um, City Hall would be a good location and we can. Possibly use, uh, the chamber, which we're not using. And so, um. What Quick Clinic is, is a mobile, uh. Mobile clinic and they would do the vaccines right in front of City Hall and people would sit in there and get their vaccines. And when you get a vaccine shot and we get a vaccine shot, we just can't let you leave. We have, you have to sit for at least 15 to 20 minutes with a EMS that will be outside provided for the city at East Point. And just in case you have any, uh. Reactions to the shot or anything like that. And so that was just one, um. Thing I want to just bring up. So people, because a lot of people know where City Hall is, um, a lot of people don't know. Where to get vaccinations. I know we talked about a little, um, about that, but I know we having a lot of events and, you know, uh, me and. All of council know that since this virus is rising in our city, we want to always. To provide ways to make it more accessible. For, uh, residents to get vaccination shots and, um, don't have to wait in line or. Sign up, it's just a walk up and things like that. So I just want to bring that to council's, um, attention that. Um, Mr. Daly, again, the CEO of Quick Clinic said that he can do up to a hundred vaccines. At City Hall for us and it was also, uh, looked at by our fire chief. Um, if that is something that we wanna pursue in the future or in a couple of weeks or anything like that, because I know again, summer is coming up. And people are gonna wanna do stuff in the parks and, um, we wanna make sure, uh, East Point is ready. Uh, to, to do these things. I know last year we were the number one hotspot in McComb County, so vaccinations. Uh, COVID testing has been not only my, uh, priority, but all of council as well. And city administration. So, again, so, uh, what better way to, to start that? Uh, vaccinations and COVID right here at City Hall. We have the space and we have the accessibility and we wanna, um, and I want to just bring this. You know, organization, they do a lot of stuff in Wayne County and, um, just want to pro- provide that information if council had any. Um, questions on that. That, um, that you saw in here that I might, you can answer because I was here when he came. And I saw the, uh, the truck myself. And, uh, or any, you just had any, uh, thing you want to say about that?
Madam mayor. Oh, sorry. Um, first of all, I want to apologize because I added this onto the agenda also. Um, which is item N, so we probably will not have to discuss it during then. Um, I. The information that is in here is about, um. Doing testing. Rapid testing. I just wanted to make sure it was vaccines and not rapid tests.
Right, it was vaccinations and they also can do rapid testing, what they've done in Wayne County. They're not only, because I was trying to do something, uh, do like a three on one. Uh, not only do COVID testing, do vaccinations and then also do food giveaways that same day. That's what they did in Wayne County. And so, um, when I spoke to the governor, uh, last week and her team. Um, it was a couple mayors on the line as well as organizations and people reached out and said. To me, uh, what can we do to be, um, to be a resource? And so, um, you know, during this time, people are, are need of not only jobs, food, but vaccinations. And so I want to just let, uh, council know, um, that this. This organization is willing to provide that. And to, uh, back that up, again, a fire chief who, who goes to any. Uh, location to make sure that we have the safety and things like that in case of emergency. He has looked at, uh, the council chambers in the space as one, uh, location that would be. And could be used, uh, for this. This, uh, mobile site.
Madam mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I, I believe Mr. Sage is on, so I was wondering if we could hear from him and if he thinks that this is. Something that East Point should continue doing. I know that. Most of the pharmacies now in East Point, um, do have the vaccines available. I know Fairway Drugs on Ten Mile, where it's even doing Walkins there. Um, not that I'm against having doing another clinic, um. I'm, support the vaccine a hundred percent and I hope everyone does go out and get vaccinated, but just to. Get his opinion on it.
Yes, um, after his opinion, let me go to Ms., uh, Councilwoman Moore. I think she had something to say real quick, then we'll go to the fire, uh, chief. Councilwoman Moore, did you have something to say?
Oh, yes, yes, um. I would like to move forward with, um, us being able to hold it in, uh, the chambers because. Right now. There are still. A lot of people that need to be vaccinated. Um, I know that we do have it and, um, at the Montessori. I tried to get my son a vaccination a couple of weeks ago and I found out that they. I didn't go to, um, Montessori, but I found out that he couldn't get the Moderna. Because he was under the age of 18. So he could only get the Pfizer. So I, I, I definitely have to make sure that. I. You know, get him the Pfizer because anywhere that they have the Moderna, they won't give it to. Teenagers 16 and 17. Uh, so yes, I believe that having a new location, the more locations, the better. That's how I see it. Because that would allow more people to be able to get the vaccination. So I think we can move forward with that.
Thank you, um, yeah, um, as you can see, one of our councilmen has just, uh, told us openly that. He just found out he had it. So as you can see, we're still battling this virus. Um, in our city and, um, in our community and surrounding areas. And so just providing the more vaccinations, the better. Um, we won't see a probably a change to, um. This whole virus probably till next year, hopefully. Um, fire, fire chief, you're on here?
Yes, madam mayor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for staying with us.
Good evening. Good evening, madam mayor, council. Yeah, the, uh. I did have an opportunity to look into the, um. I'm gonna make sure I caught the Quick Clinic and, um. You know, operationally, it certainly could work, um, at City Hall, um, but I do want to point out that. Um, in the city of East Point and within five miles from our city borders, there's actually. A total of 36 different locations that you can get vaccinated at. As well as for, um. Different chains in the area that you can just walk in and get vaccinated at. One of which is the, uh, right at, right at Nine Mile and Grass. You can walk in and, uh. Get vaccinated at any time. Um, the one, the one concern that I can't answer, it could be a concern on a. Any kind of vaccination that would happen in a city facility would be any liability. That would go with that. I don't know. Um, the Quick Clinic, uh, what kind of liability insurance levels they have or anything like that, um. But whenever you're administering a vaccine. Um, on city property, of course, would be a certain, uh, measure of, uh, risk. Could be as simple as somebody, uh, a trip in the fall or, or something like that, um. But I just want to make counsel where there's a, a lot of, uh. Sites around in, in the city and around the city that are offering the vaccine at this time. Um, so hopefully that information helps in your decision tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, madam mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know a vaccine that they supply or does it, uh, depend? Does it vary?
Um, they supply Moderna and Pfizer.
Madam mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um. Um, I know this must be a crazy question, but. There is, there is no charge to the city, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um. Nick, you said something about liability, uh. I would ask the city manager, our city, uh, city attorney about the liability, uh. Is that something that, uh, we, we would be covered with automatically, uh, Rich?
Hold on for, uh, just a moment, uh, Councilmember Curley. Randy, are you still on the, uh, the meeting? Randy Blum?
Yep, I'm here.
Is that something that the, 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 uh, city has insurance coverage for in the event, uh, there was some type of incident?
I mean, th- they're tripping falls and stuff like that, sure. If there's any issue with the vaccine itself, no. I mean, I would, I would assume the liability would be on the Quick Clinic. And we didn't want to get additionally insured out of them before they showed up if we did it.
Right.
I think before we would go into contract with anybody, getting back to contracts. We would make sure that they have liability insurance before we would, even as a council or even as an organization. Put something together like this and, um, they are insured. They have their own liability insurance, um. And I think before we would have something like this, we would make sure that all that is covered before we move forward with that.
Yeah, madam mayor, members of council, we, the city would just simply require, uh, some type of indemnification clause in the event that the city, uh. Was sued, it would look to, uh, this third party for, uh, compensation.
Uh, mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess before I'd want to vote on anything, I mean, the booklet provided to us was about rapid testing, so I don't have any of the information. On vaccines. Um. Or any of these questions. Because you included the group testing. I don't have any information on vaccines through this.
Well, I should have been provided when I stinked it over a week, um almost, was it a week now? I know I wasn't provided in here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, there's a chance that um in the next upcoming weeks that Pfizer may get approval for emergency use. For their vaccines given to twelve to sixteen year olds. So I think right now, I would be fine with maybe if you can get that information. And then if you do, maybe we could put that in the next agenda. Because with that coming, there might be an increase in demand for the vaccine. Um, because right now at this time, I think we do have a lot of locations in the city that's offering vaccines. And I know there's no longer like wait lists and things like that. And like Mr. Sage said, um, the Rite Aid at Nine Mile. And Grashit is offering walk-ins. And I, like I said, I also know that Fairway Drugs was um offering walk-ins. And they do have Pfizer and Moderna there also. So um, if you can get that information, maybe it is something we can look forward to doing. In the next couple of weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you all for the discussion. Yeah, uh and Mr. Um, I'm sorry, Fire Chief. If you can give us that information to our city manager, um, the locations. Because uh talking about locations and no one knows about it, it don't exist. And you know what you see, you know, and I, when um I talked to the governor uh last year, I mean, not last year, well, last year too, but last week. And they uh, they worked with me and we partnered together to put the one at the Montessori. I had three elderly people that did not know about Rite Aid or Walgreens at all these locations. And it was three of them, the guy of the same car, they looked like they was over sixty years old that lived here and was looking for a location. And also my neighbors across the street who are uh over sixty years old, um went to Detroit to get vaccinated. So we talk about all these vaccination locations, but not only did I know and um our fire chief knew, but we need to get this out to the public. So, so I don't have to call the governor and ask her for certain things that our community is our, that's have, that has, but nobody knows about it. And so, because our own city um, city councilwoman, uh Councilwoman Moore had to go outside of her own city to go to Detroit. So this doesn't make any sense. So if you know the information, let us know so we can provide it to the community. Because if you don't do that, no one knows and we have to continuously not be a service in our own community. So let's work on uh better communication so that the residents know what's going on moving forward. Um.
Mayor.
Yes, sir, I'm Councilman.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, the, the day after you, you went on Fox Two, I just, you know, Googled around. And I shared on Facebook that you, you can get it at Fairway, as Mr. Sage said, nine uh nine in Grashit, Rite Aid. They all had appointments available, CVS on Ten Mile and Walgreens at Ten and Grashit.
Thank you. Thank you. I was on Fox Two. Okay, thank you for watching me again. Um, just getting the news out. So thank you Fox Two for uh doing that story. Anytime I'm trying to do something for the community, me or the council, I'm glad to get press to let you all know that I'm working for you. It is not a dull day being the mayor of East Point.
Um, there last time I was on the news, you said to have my facts straight, so I just trying to get the, the facts out there.
I have the facts straight. I'm just getting more facts out there. I'm not going back and forth with you, Card, um Councilwoman DeMonica. Okay, not tonight. Um, Councilwoman Moore?
Uh, well, as a member of the city, I um, I'm not on Facebook like that. So anything that's on our quote unquote Facebook page, I've never been on our Facebook page. I'm not a, a big fan of Facebook in that way, and I know a lot of people who aren't. So that information, even though it may have been placed on there, I, I didn't know it. I would, I never would see it. Because I don't do Facebook and you know, I know a lot of other people, even some of my young kids don't do Facebook. So it has to be a better way of getting it um out to the residents other than just Facebook.
You're right. That's why I thank uh Fox Two, Channel Four, and also et cetera for helping me get that out there. And um, that's all I'm going to say about that. Um, also, uh, let's move right along. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, because again, um, a lot of our seniors, they don't have Facebook. And they don't, they're, they, they still read the newspaper and they still look at Fox Two News, since uh Councilman uh bring it up. And so um, we have all these different levels um of, you know, getting the word out there. And so again, if the uh newspaper or TV wants to help me do that, to make it broader. For people to know what vaccinations are and located, that's what I'm continuously do and that's the facts. Um, item M, discussion of possible approval for an outside event at City Hall for National Day of Prayer. I brought this on with um Bishop, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for waiting so long. I'm sorry we going back and forth on here. Um, Bishop Lloyd is a, uh not only a resident, but he is the Bishop of Rema International Church. Outside of East Point, we're gonna have to move him inside of uh East Point, but he's right on the border in Harper Woods. But he has, is a longtime resident um in the city of East Point. He does a lot for the community. He has came to a lot of council meetings. And um, he wants to work with us on a National Day of Prayer and I'll let you have the floor, Bishop. Welcome and thank you for staying.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, to City Council, it's doing good to see you again. And um, my wife and I are celebrating twenty-six years of marriage this year, twenty-three years of pastoring. And four years of being residents in a beautiful city of East Point, Michigan. I think an interfaith day of prayer would be a blessing to the city. Um, of course, we know the National Day of Prayer is coming up in two days. So I think it'd be kind of hard to strategize something uh with the, within a forty-eight hour period. But I made a proposal to the mayor to have something in July or perhaps August. Um, and we can title it uh the City of East Point Day of Prayer. Our focus would be family, faith, and fellowship. Um, the event can be right there at City Hall. Um, I will personally finance the event so the city wouldn't have to worry about equipment. And in addition to that, because my wife and I are the president, CEOs, and co-founders of the Rema Television Network. And we reach uh three point five million homes in the metropolitan Detroit area through RTN Channel twenty-eight dot three. I'm a resident of East Point and I watch, monitor the network on TV Channel twenty-eight dot three and Comcast three ninety-seven. We will actually broadcast the event live uh through our television network.
Wow, thank you, uh, the mayor.
Yes, um, thank you Bishop Lloyd for coming out this evening. Um, yes, I'm, I'm not necessarily against this. I think that as long as any event application was filled out and submitted to the city, this is something that, you know, we could, you know, move forward with voting on in the future. If the, his church would like to host something in one of our parks.
Sounds good. Um, yes, uh Bishop, do you want to uh come up here uh to the city manager's office and get a form? And we can, you can fill it out and I'll help you if, if you need help, we'll there help you if you, if you're here. And we can, um, I know you want to do it at City Hall and um, well, City Hall is a good location. So I know you said City Hall, um, but why did you choose City Hall instead of a park if you want to let us know why?
Oh, because before we moved to Harper Woods, uh we were in Warren, Michigan on Nine Mile and Sherwood before the UAW purchased our uh facility. With uh Bishop Adolphus Cass and Mayor Faute on a day of prayer every single year. And it was at City Hall. So you know, I kind of took that concept, that idea and said, maybe that's something we can do in the city of East Point. Since I'm a resident here now.
Thank you. I always want to do something like that um in the city of East Point. So with you on board and putting it together and doing it with the city, I think that's awesome. Anybody else have anything to say? Um, Councilman DeMonica? I know it's burning. What you got to say?
I had my mute button on. No, no, I just agree. I, I mean, I agree with Councilwoman Lucido if, you know, uh, you know, certainly. If anyone even wants to uh have an organization at City Hall and do, do an event like this. I just, um, I, I just wouldn't uh see it as ci- city sponsored. If, if any church or anything wants to do an event, I'm happy to support. Um, just, you know, consistent with what I said earlier, just wouldn't want it to be a city sponsored event, that's all. But certainly Bishop, you, I'm happy to have you anytime. Just wouldn't be like city sponsored event. Your church is welcome. You know, any other groups welcome to have you. That, that, I guess that's my uh, my opinion.
Well, you know, every year we have church at the park at Kennedy Park, right there in East Point, Michigan.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I agree. Uh, uh, go to City Hall, get the form and fill it out. And I like the idea.
I do too. And like you said before, Bishop Lloyd and his wife and his kind, um, on the Rema Television Network. Uh, which is another TV station, um, which uh services a lot of East Point and a million viewers. And so him, you know, he's using not only his money, but also his resource to uh, you know, let people know what we're doing. And we're a family town here, um, in the city of East Point. And um, uh, thank you for even thinking about doing that because people want to charge for television uh space and money. And you're doing that just because, you know, you know, it's the right thing to do. So I appreciate that. And we'll be looking forward to that forum and thank you again for everything you've done. Any other questions for the bishop before?
We were nominated as Television Network of the Year and we're winning right now by over nine thousand nationwide votes.
Hey, good.
Yes, sir.
Great.
Wow.
Bishop? What, once you uh fill out your form, I would definitely move to, for the motion. To add the outside event at City Hall for the National Day of Prayer, definitely.
I will be there tomorrow.
And of course Bishop, we are a city that, you know, uh is about awe, you know, uh people of, you know, of God. So that's Catholic, we're gonna be partnering up Catholic, Lutheran, any other denominations as well. So we, it's not just everybody. Of course, I want to make sure I put that out there and um.
Any other nations or religions? The other day that it's a distinction between religions and denominations within the Christian faith. You have Catholic, you have Lutheran, you have Pentecostal, you have Baptist. But when you look at other religions, you have the Muslims, those that are of uh the Islamic faith, et cetera. And I told her, we would do the research to find out how many religions are in the city of East Point and invite everybody. So it would, it would be an interfaith event.
Yes, everybody is invited. So, you know, we believe in diversity and inclusion here at East Point. So that's what a family town is. Thank you again. Um, moving right along. Uh, to uh discussion on, oh, we did the East Point mobile immunization. Was that the same thing, uh Mayor Pro Tem as the Quick Clinic?
And? Yeah, yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, well, at least we know we're on the same page. How about that? By getting vaccinations and things like that. So I think we all are on the same page. So I'm glad you uh put that on there and lets people know that we're thinking alike. You know, that's probably why you're the Mayor Pro Tem. Um, moving right along to discussion on Smart Hub. I know, um, Mayor Pro Tem put this on here. Lucido, um, would you like to speak on this?
Well, so Madam Mayor, I, the reason why I put this on the agenda is that I believe that you may have met with some people from Smart. And I think that if we're going to be trying to discuss maybe some future things in the city. Um, like hubs or uh joint parking lots, that it should be um discussed at the council table. So that's why I added it on the agenda.
Well, it was I, idea, um, I think we talked about this before because we put a uh, a survey out for the residents. So it was talked about um, so that we can do the Smart Hub right there on Grashit and um Eight Mile. As you all know where that location is, at the beauty supply store, that whole location with a foot locker, you know, Smart wants to do a Smart Hub. That we're thinking, there was, they were talking about a smaller uh Smart Hub, something smaller on a more smaller scale. But you know, your mayor, we all, I always think be it. So I was thinking about, you know, they were coming together. And I think we, they, we did some type of, I think East Point did something similar to um, to those drawings. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem years ago, even before I got here. And so we just uh used those old uh drawings from A W, I believe, or McKenna. Um, that vision and using that same vision of doing a Smart Hub, which you don't, dealing with uh Uber, Lyft. Talking about scooters, we talking about Smart, D Dot, and doing a transportation space right there. And then doing probably some little cafes and also a small police uh station there. So it was going to be beautiful, beautifully done um by federal funds. And so we uh, we met up earlier, uh me, Ms. Dome, the economic developer, the building, um, building and safety director. As well as the uh Director of Public Safety to see how that would look. So we are not um redoing something. We're just uh bringing back the vision that East Point had uh years ago. But again, we talked about this. I think, Ms. Dome, I think this was a couple of months ago when we asked for a survey from the residents to see how that would look, correct?
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I escaped my memory. I know that in two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
There was a, a whole lot of interest and it, it really comes down to money. I, I think the interest is still there. Funding is not at this point. But um, from our discussions, they're still very interested in what we have to offer as a community.
Thank you. Is Ms. Holman on here?
She should be. Ms. Holman, are you here?
Yes, ma'am. Holman, thank you for uh, now, didn't Smart do a, ask for a survey from the community not too long ago?
So Smart has some funding for um, um, uh, research grants. And they looked at three of the uh major transit ways, which was Michigan Avenue, Woodward Avenue, and then along Grashit. Um, they are looking at different types of transit hubs for each of those uh major thoroughfares. Um, I, ideally would be not best to mention addresses because then prices go up. Um, but they are looking at different um, different options along those ways. There was a community survey um that was sent out. We're still waiting for the results. We have had conversations with both um Smart representatives as well as some of their consultants. Um, so we're, we're.
I'm sorry, I believe we did those surveys and we put them on Facebook, didn't we?
We did.
That was, that was a month ago. Yeah.
Um, that was, I think, even December and January.
Okay, so uh, yeah, in January. So nothing has been hidden. It was already out there.
Not, not about the addresses, ma'am. Then the prices go up, so we have to be careful.
Yeah, so anything that we do as a city is always out there, but we don't talk too much about it because we don't know how it's going to go.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, one last word since we're just about done. Uh, I, 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 I agree with Sarah that uh. Any further, any further discussion uh about that corner. And um, should be at the council table. Uh, I for one, uh, am very skeptical. Uh, I for, I for one know that the city doesn't have any money to uh, to buy that property. Uh, I believe that Smart has one heck of a lot of more money than, than the city of East Point. And um, if they want to buy that property and do whatever they want to do with it, uh, they know where the owner lives. And uh, they can call that gentleman and work out some type of um agreement but to buy that property. But uh, I'm not, I, I guess I'm not, I'm, I'm, I can certainly sit down and, and look at the uh situation. And the alternatives, but um, I guess I'd rather have a big discussion. If we're going to spend a lot of money. I guess I'd rather have a big discussion on repairing our local streets than I would investing in partnership with, with Smart. To buy uh Eight Mile and Grashit.
Well, I, I think you're assuming and you know what they say.
No, no, I don't know what they say. Tell me.
I don't know. But um, what I'm saying is, we wasn't talking about in talks of Ms. Holman saying anything about us buying. Or spending city money. It was a conversation and what, what they want to spend in our city.
Yes, yes, it was.
Thank you, Ms. Holman.
And Madam, Madam Mayor, I don't have a problem with that, but I just think that the next conversation, however that might look, needs to be at, at the council table. And not two or three people that were selected to go on a tour with, with Smart.
What two people were selected? I'm not going to go in things because you're assuming again. So I don't want to talk about assuming. Ms. Uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Lucido, you had a question?
Yes, um, first of all, I, I'm not aware of the survey. I'm sorry that I missed it. I know we had a, a survey on for nine. Yes, um, first of all, I, I'm not aware of the survey. I'm sorry that I missed it. I know we had a, a survey on for Nine Mile Road. I don't remember one for, um, a transportation hub. I do know that we did discuss, I mean, it was definitely discussed part of the RTA. Um, to possibly put a transportation hub there at that time, um, and plans were drawn up. Um, I don't know if there's any other federal funding out there that would be available to do something like that, but maybe that's something Mr. Blum can look into. And if so, bring that to our attention.
Again, none of the co, none of the conversation, Ms. Holman, if you can help me here, that East Point was spending any money on this. It was an idea and people come with ideas for cities all the time, just like before Foundation came with an idea. But, um, we, they, people, organizations, investors. Uh, partnerships come to East Point all the time, not saying they want us to spend money, but they wanna spend money with us. That is how BS is, that's how cities grow. Um, Ms. Holman?
Yeah, yes, actually Smart, um, we did have a meeting, um, all the communities along Grashit were invited to the meeting. Um, and yes, there was a public survey. We had it on our Facebook and our website about what, um. Residents are looking for in terms of what Smart can offer. Um, so that was, uh, I think it may have been December, January, um, I have to look back at the emails. Um, but there were surveys that were posted and responses that, uh, that Smart got back. I have not, we have not seen the results of everything, but their consultants are working on it.
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman.
Ms. Holman, can you give us a, um, small synopsis of what? Um, they are offering to different communities?
So what they are looking for is along Michigan Avenue and Woodward and Grashit Avenue. Um, are places to put a variety of different transportation hubs. Some that will actually be set up for the buses to come in with heated, um. Places for customers to wait with turnarounds, with actually places for the bus drivers to. Private places for them to rest, restrooms, things like that. Um, they are looking for smaller locations, um, they want to include Uber and Lyft. Um, they also wanna include some of the, um, the fun scooters, I think it's Mogo and some of the others, I mean, locations like that. Um, they're talking about, um, electric vehicle charging stations and things. Um, and so, um, again. I, I don't know how many they want along each of the thoroughfares, Michigan, Woodward and Grashit. But, um, they're looking at locations that are size wise, um, compatible with what they wanna put in. Um, and, uh, and then go from there.
Okay, so as a person who has. Had multiple little hustles going on in life. Um, I actually did Lyft before and always was trying to find some kind of. Parking lot to park in and wait for my next call, wait for my next ride. Sometimes I would be down at, um, uh, the Kroger, you know, um, parking lot. But I would always try to find a place to park so I wouldn't have to randomly drive around until my next call. Also, those little, um, scooters, um. I actually designed the scooter before they came out with those scooters and won a prize for those. Those are really good to have. I know the young people in the neighborhood actually rode one while I was downtown. And that's something that we should definitely welcome to our city because it, it brings more people in. Um, if nothing else, but exchanging those scooters and, and maybe, um, um, utilizing the businesses in our community. I definitely think that the offer of, uh, them. Selecting us or being one of the communities that they select would be an improvement. Because like I said, I definitely was a Lyft driver trying to apply, find a place to, to park. And it would be nice for, um, the Smart Buses to have a place where they can actually stop. And rest, um, use the restroom. Um, and have a facility that we don't have to add any type of rep, revenue for. So I, I think that that would be an improvement because right now, driving through that parking lot. You know, you gotta miss all the craters, you have to miss, miss all the potholes. And I'm sure that if there was a hub put in that place, they'd fix it.
Well, you know, uh, thank you, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't trying to interrupt you. I just think, um, uh, you know, bringing so, so much more to East Point is our goal and that's the vision. Um, you know, that location right there and so many other locations are, are not, you know. Are, they look, doesn't look the best in East Point. And so, you know, uh, bringing Smart and federal funding there, uh, which they were saying they were trying to work on grants, eight to nine million dollars. So this was what, what, uh, Smart was telling us. They didn't say anything about East Point. Um, and so they were trying to just uplift that corner and provide more, um, jobs. You know, uh, transportation and things that the President of the United States is trying to do, uh, throughout the country. Um, and so I think it was a, a good idea and of course green space. Uh, probably maybe a Starbucks, I'm just putting that out there or different, you know, coffee shops and things like that. And also people can park and ride. So, so, some people that wanna park their cars, they can ride downtown Detroit. And so I just thought it was, um, something new, innovative. It's not electric cars, but it's innovative. And it's something new that they were thinking about East Point and it's a lot of different mayors and a lot of different elected officials that were. On that call not too long ago, trying to fight to get it in their city. And I've been trying to fight to get it in East Point. So I've been trying to, you know, um, when other cities are trying to fight for stuff, trust me, I'm on the line too. And on channel two doing it. So, um, move right along. Any other questions on this?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Really quick, so yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea if we could get federal funding to redo that corner. I think, yeah, something I'd wanna move forward with, or me even other areas in the city. It might not even necessarily be that, um, corner. Um, but with that said, just moving forward, I don't know if Smart had reached out to, um, you, Madam Mayor, or Ms. Doom, or Ms. Holman. I'm not really sure how this all started, but in the future, I would just request that, you know, maybe they, if they wanted to, if they had an idea or suggestion, that they bring it to council. As a whole, but that's all I have this evening.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I would ask them to, I think I did send the information out to you all. I don't know if the, the first part, they, I know you talked about the survey. I thought they, we did do that on council. If not, we'd do that in the future. But we put something on Facebook. I think, um, anything we do, council has to be aware of that. Um, before it's approved to put it on there. So I thought you all knew about it. And if not, we have to do better in communication moving forward. And I would do better with that. Um, moving forward to approval of, this was brought on by Mayor Pro Tem for the approval of Gleaners Meetup and Eat Up. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
So yes, for the past three years, we have approved this program for Gleaners to come to the park and provide lunches for kids up to eighteen year olds. Eighteen years old throughout the summer. Um, they partner with the city, they partner with the school district. And, um, it's been pretty, we really haven't had too much of an issue with the exception that some of the kids obviously don't throw away their server from containers afterwards. So there is some trash pickup that might need to be done afterwards, but I think it's a good program. So I would be happy with inviting them back to, to do it again this summer, especially with COVID and some parents, um. You know, being maybe a little financially hit this year, I think offering the free lunches is nice to the community.
I do too. I'm glad you brought this up. Any other, um, conversation on the, um, the meetup thing, Eat Up guys?
So Madam Mayor, I can make a motion if you would like.
Yes, ma'am.
I would motion that the city of East Point partner with Gleaners Food Bank to provide lunches this summer in Kennedy Park.
Okay, thank you. Motion is second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, some good agenda items and discussion. Thank you, everybody. Uh, payroll and bills, council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next is the hearing of the public, those who wasn't able to be heard, um, at the first hearing of the public, um. Either you can put something in the chat or not, I don't know if the young lady who couldn't get on stayed on. Okay, good. I hope we didn't take too long. I was trying. Trying. Later. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Make sure you get it up next time. You first, you're first. Uh, thank you for holding on. Yes, this is the second hearing of the public. We wanna allow everyone to, uh, have opinions or suggestions or ideas for mayor and council also, um. So that you can help us make decisions. So the hearing of the public is now open. You get three minutes and we ask you to be respectful of council, mayor and all those that are listening of all ages. The hearing of the public is now open. Ms. Walton?
Um, I believe your name is Marcy would like to speak first. Uh, actually, it's, it's Karen. Yeah, so, um. There's, um, several problems here, um, and, you know, unfortunately, this is what happens when. The nuisance tenant, uh, ordinance isn't enforced, um, numerous things going on. You know, there's reckless behavior and care of child. This kid's maybe about five to eight years old. More than one occasion, he's laid across the roof of a parked car on the street. Everyone's aware of excessive, excessive speeders on the block. And the adults that should be looking out for him, you know, they're more than forty feet away. So if a speeder loses control, hits the car, that kid's gonna go flying and be either seriously injured if not killed. So you got, you know, the male adult tenant living there more than, more than, he's sitting in the car sitting pot. When the kids are running around outside instead of being responsible, watching them. Tenant on the lease, she's got a pattern of interfering with and damaging my property. Um, I successfully sued her for a hundred and ninety-five dollars in damages. Her hostile behavior hasn't changed at all. And she's definitely delu, delusional, demanding, I can't tell the kids to stay off my property. I told her if she was watching them, I wouldn't have to tell them they can't be on my property because she wasn't watching. She was on the phone in her car and turned away from the kids. So, you know, unfortunately, she acts like, you know, um, a fifth grader with arrested development there. Um, mocking me, she's using excessively vulgar language. That unfortunately gets her here in all this. My other pot head brother runs out of house screaming profanities with excessive F's. And spits on my barberries. Yeah, really during a pandemic. And actually really disgusting behavior pure. Um, so, you know, I'm bringing this attend, this to your attention because this is what happens when the city and the police fail to enforce the nuisance tenant ordinance. What it does is it creates a sense of their false entitlement that both emboldens them and escalates their republic. Their repugnant conduct. So now they believe they're above the law, the ordinances, they can interfere with and damage my property with impunity. And constantly lie to the police about any wrongdoing. Officer, I spoke with the other day when I told them what trans body claimed they are to talk. Rich and George, you need to make sure these, um, officers understand they are not to attempt to open my locked screen door. Because they can't hear me. It's not exigent sort of stances and the screen was open. There's, you know, you, you just, you don't do that. So, you know, you got a twelve-year-old kid urinating in the backyard in an out of control, you know, pot head screaming excessive.
The time is out, ma'am, I'm sorry. Ms., uh, Karen, your time is up. Thank you for your participation. Everything that you see at that location, address and those things that you were talking about, if you can email that to us, we can, you know. So we can better, uh, put those together if you would like to. Um, I'll give you that email address, uh, that wonderful email address, edoom@eastpointcity.org. And Ms. Doom, she always.
In the chat, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, can you put that in the chat?
Yes.
Because we always, it's recorded and we hear what you have to say, but sometimes when you guys want us to pinpoint certain things, we, we prefer that you email it to us too. And also we wanna hear it because someone in the audience, um, may be going through the same thing or experiencing something else. And we wanna know about what's going on. Thank you so much, Ms. Karen. Good to hear from you. Haven't heard from you in a while.
Um. You likewise.
Yes, ma'am. Be safe. Um, do we have anyone else?
Mr. Gate, Gary Stasic would like to speak next.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Owens, council members. On behalf of the East Point Advocates Supporting Equality, I wanna thank council. Um, for approving our special event application for the Charity Car Show. Uh, to support the Ease Movement for June sixteenth. And we're looking forward to following all of the CDC guidelines and having a good night, hopefully to help with this project. Thank you again for supporting it by voting yes to allow it. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. And I hope you guys raised over, over your thirty thousand dollars that day. Um, anyone else would like to speak?
Mayor, uh, Ms. Cindy Federley would like to speak next.
Good evening, Ms. Federley.
Hi, you got my last name right. I'm so proud of you guys.
Oh, finally, yes, yes. I always get that right.
I just want to comment on the vaccination site. There, I am well into my sixties and I don't follow Facebook to find out where vaccination sites are. There are so many places where you can go. It's on the news, it's on the street corners, they have signs outside, all kinds of stores. If you go into any store, they're offering it everywhere. Um, there are vaccination sites that have extras every day because people aren't coming in. So I see no need for the, our city to offer that, that service. I think there are plenty of places for people to go and don't think, cause we're in our sixties, we don't know how to find this stuff out. There are plenty of ways to find that out, even if we are senior citizens. And I just wanna say Harvey Curly, I hope you feel better. You look like you need to go to bed right now.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Federley. And to go back on what you said, I was speaking of people that I know. Who were that age that couldn't find one. So again, um. Next person.
Uh, Mr. Joseph Sontag would like to speak next.
Yeah, you got it, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Sontag.
Good evening, madam.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, Madam Mayor and, uh, City Council, thanks for letting, having me on. Uh, my name's Joseph Sontag. I've been resident for three years. And I just wanted to, um, talk briefly. I'm sorry, what's that? I just wanna, I wanna, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I didn't want you to be interrupted. Go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, I just wanna talk briefly about ranked choice voting in the community. Um, I believe that ranked choice voting is a good alternative to the structure used in traditional primaries and general elections across the community, state and country. Certain states such as Maine and communities across the country have already successfully instituted ranked choice voting with satisfactory results. I believe it will minimize party infighting and allow true ideas to be conveyed from the candidates. And for them to be more genuine with voters. If a candidate for a specific party is fighting to attain one spot to progress onto the general election. The candidate can risk losing some specific details that are important to the voter just to appeal to a wider audience because of the one spot. To allow two or more individuals to run in the same party in a general election would promote unity within the parties and give the voter a true idea. Of the candidate and who closely aligns with them. Too often have I heard that a voter has voted for the lesser of two evils. Uh, when detailing their voting experience additionally stating that neither was their candidate choice within a general election. Well, while with ranked choice voting, these voters are more able to vote for a candidate that personally aligns with their views. And they don't have to compromise on personal values or beliefs by voting for a person simply because they have a D or an R next to their name. In a democratic republic, I would think we aspire to find out what the voters truly think about the candidates by giving them more options rather than taking them away. Ranked choice voting shows not only one vote for one person, but a ranking of whom the voter most aligns with. Ranked choice voting will also promote a larger group of people to, to become involved in the government and public service. Because they will be able to run for a position without being forced to play the game, knocking other off, knocking other people off on the way to the ballot, so to speak. These newcomers will be able to be themselves and be, be presented to the voter without being forced to appeal to a larger audience by being genuine. I feel as though this community does not truly understand the significance. I feel as though this community does not truly understand the significance we have in the grander picture when it comes to how our government officials are elected and how we are one of the few trailblazers to say we championed more options to voters in the name of democracy rather than the few, rather than fewer. All I ask is that at least we as a community should be able to have our voices heard in the matter of ranked choice voting. And if it is right for us by means of a ballot measure where the community votes. This decision would be in tune with everything we stand for as community, state, and country. And that it is to allow voters within the community to be the deciders and not just the select few. Thank you. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. You stopped right at three minutes. You said so much.
I checked so, thank you.
Thank you. Is this your first time on here? Your last name sounds familiar.
Yeah, certainly is my first time being on here. I mean, my, my, my family's been part of the community for, for decades. I just so happen to be like the newest comer into the community.
Oh, wow. Welcome to East Point.
Thank you.
Keep coming to our meetings.
I, I certainly will.
Okay, sounds good. You have anybody else?
Yes, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford would like to speak next.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Again, uh, I just wanted to add my thanks for the approval of the special event for Eaze. And to let know that we are pushing a very aggressive agenda to get the sculptor installed on Thanksgiving Day of this year. So we've got a lot of work to do and we would certainly appreciate everyone um, continued support and the things that we're doing because we know that this will be a bright shining star for the city. Um, and Councilman Curly, I am praying for you um, the best of health as with everyone else. I am fully vaccinated and thankful that um, we can start moving forward. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too, ma'am. Thank you. You have anyone else?
Uh, yes, Mandy would like to speak next.
Good evening, Ms. Mandy.
Um, good evening, council. I was uh, listening to the meeting today and I was kinda concerned about this survey. I've never seen it. I have never seen it on Facebook page. There's many seniors out here that have no knowledge of any of the East Point pages to be able to follow up with anything as far as what's going on in the city. There's gotta be another way of communication for our seniors. Bishop Lloyd, I, I can't wait for you to have the break for a day. Um, I've been to a few of your services. They've been very nice. As far as the vaccinations go, the city of Detroit's running around handing out flyers now. Well, as the mayor went out and handed out some flyers and get, got these people to these spots to get their vaccinations, it doesn't appear to be. Um, that when you were on Fox two and you were arguing with party about the numbers, I politely went on site. And I said, oh, she can't even read the number correctly and she's not even given the correct information. There's many sites in East Point giving out vaccinations. We gotta get these seniors there. Think about that instead of getting your name out there. As far as the grass cutting goes, this company reneged on you. Now you have no one to cut grass. You said you're all for the children. You're all for them getting community service hours in order for them to complete their high school diploma and their hours of completion. Did you ever think about maybe checking into that? Uh, if you go on next door, there's plenty of kids out there looking for work. Have a good evening, council. I hope you look into some of these issues.
Thank you, ma'am. As, as always, you have some uh, good points. Um, I think uh, not too long ago, I think I just emailed um, our city manager about uh, jobs for the youth. Um, Ms. Doom, you just received that not too long ago and to uh, get some of the youth to work for the city of East Point. Uh, you, I think you just worked, uh, sent that to the recreation department uh, a couple of days ago. And also, I think um, not even before I did Fox two, I'm glad everybody watches TV. Um, we have been working uh, with uh, the senior buildings. Uh, with uh, Mayor Pro Tem knows this, to make sure the seniors are getting vaccinated. So we've been doing that for over a month now. And uh, so um, I think instead of passing out flyers, I actually go to the buildings itself. And um, working with the governor of the last couple, the last week, which she has been helping me to get uh, vaccination spots that people know of. And uh, prime locations, which she has designated, one, the Montessori School, and she's also working on two other locations um, on Kelly Road. So if we have seniors that need vaccinations, it will be accessible for them to get there. With the help of not only the, hold on one second, please. With the help, not only with the uh, governor's office, but um, Hackles uh, the executive office as well to help get seniors there to make sure they're, uh, they get the transportation needed. So the things that you see on Fox two was something that I've been working on before you saying something on TV. And I have the data that shows that. So um, Mayor Pro Tem.
I know, just really quick. I was just gonna ask if we could just finish the hearing of the public before you gave your closing comments.
Um, no, because I'm not gonna remember. But um, I wanna just make sure that was said. Um, do we have any more of the hearing of the public, anyone else?
Um, I do not see any additional hands raised and there's nothing else in the chat, mayor.
Okay, thank you. The second hearing of the public is now closed. Now we have mayor council reports. We can start with the Mayor Pro Tem. Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I was just going to really quick apologize. I did find the survey on Facebook from Smart. Um, it just was an oversight. That was um, so yes, it, it definitely was on there. I would like to maybe reach out to them and see where you get those results. Um, other than that, I just wanna wish uh, Harvey Curly, Councilman Curly, a speedy recovery. Hopefully he feels better soon. Um, that's all I have this evening. So Mr. Curly can go to bed.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, and thank everybody for your concerns. Um, let me push out this word of caution. Um, I've gotten my second shot probably a month ago. Um, we do not go out to restaurants. I do go to, with Carol, to uh, the grocery store. Uh, Monday morning, we went uh, to have uh, another test. And um, this morning about eight o'clock, they called and said, you're positive and you gotta stay home fourteen days from the day that you were really feeling rotten, which was probably a week ago. So the fact that you got both shots, please don't puff yourself up and say, hey, I'm, I'm good, I'm good for all the restaurants. I'm going in there. So please be careful and I will be careful. And the ladies write, um, as soon as I say a German, I'm going to bed. God bless everybody.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Thanks, mayor. Um, I'll, I'll also keep this uh, real, well, I'll keep it as brief as possible for your Councilman Curly. Hope you feel better uh, soon for sure. Uh, get, get some sleep for sure. Um, uh, yeah, also the Smart survey, I did see that on Facebook while we were sitting here. Um, yeah, I hope to see the results on that too. But uh, wanted to thank uh, Mayor Pro Tem Lucido and our city attorney, uh, Rich Albright. And uh, Mr. Curly, I know you had an excused absence for uh, the litter cleanup. Uh, I did with the Group Green Michigan um, last weekend. Uh, we had twenty-two volunteers, twenty-nine bags of trash. And I mean, we could do hundred volunteers and there'll still be work to do. So next time everyone else come out again and uh, we'll hit it again. We'll just keep going, I guess, till there's no uh, litter in East Point. And um, also I wanna thank everybody that donated uh, around my birthday time on Facebook to Turning Point, raised four hundred and twenty bucks for Turning Point. So it's a great organization, uh, helps women that have had issues with domestic violence. Um, so if, if you can donate to them, we of course also help them out when a CBG time comes around. And, and um, I've been continuing to take part in the um, redevelopment-ready communities training uh, each Tuesday. Uh, well, like every other Tuesday since it's the same time as our council meetings here. Um, and that's been good. And I have received my second dose of the COVID vaccination also. And I'll be, what, two weeks after you get it, your full steam? So pretty soon I'll be uh, uh, fully vaccinated from COVID. And let's see, last but not least, happy birthday, Alyssa. It is my wife's birthday today. So I wanted to say happy birthday and hope she's enjoying herself while I'm uh, just sitting on a council meeting right now. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Very short. I um, Curly, I would definitely add you to my prayers tonight. Um, knowing that COVID is real and it's not anything to take lightly. Um, I pray that you get well soon, very soon, and that you feel better. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, the Boys and Girls Club After School Program was selected by Congressman Levin's office. And they are asking the public if they can send letters of support to the House Appropriations Subcommittee on Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development. Um, this is moving right along. I can't, I'm very excited uh, when this is um, you know, the Boys and Girls Club comes to East Point is needed to do something for the youth. And uh, also if later on, we can partner out with the Boys and Girls Club for some, summer programs, that'd be something that we have to do in the future. But uh, if you guys want to participate and sending letters to support uh, this uh, program, this after-school program, I just got the letter uh, from the congressman's office. Uh, I'm sorry, for Vance McComb. We're working on that and we're asking for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that they're gonna split with uh, Mount Clemens and also East Point. And so um, also we have, I have been working on um, different grants and sending letters to all type of, you know, sponsors to get this, this in uh, this in the city of East Point. And we're working on a visioning session, which we're gonna invite elected officials. We're gonna invite the community out to see what it would look like in the city of East Point. So you can have a, a say in what you want and um, what you want them to do. And um, so when we move forward, we wanna make sure that you all have a say in how we do that. So also, the Smart Hub was uh, was awesome, you know, them coming out and trying to revitalize our city. And we have other two locations that um, that they were thinking about. If they don't do uh, the Eight Mile and grass, they were thinking about doing smaller sections. And uh, again, if that's approved and we're selected, hopefully by this survey, then we can move along with having some schoolers or something, you know, in the city of East Point. Also, I just worked on a grant with uh, the partnership with um, healthy, uh, healthy babies for a bright future. And that grant will be ten thousand dollars. And it will help with uh, COVID nineteen for young children and uh, babies and things like that. And I worked on that proposal with the Pregnancy Aid, which is right on Eight Mile Road. They're new to the city of East Point. I thank Bishop Lloyd for uh, introducing me to them. He's amazing. Um, and I was working with the CEO there, the director. And uh, they reached out to all the mayors in different states to uh, do, do this uh, health innovation. And we only had three days and we put something together. So I prayed that we get this ten thousand dollar grant. It will help our community um, and things like that. Also, again, I worked with the governor's office in preparing and uh, choosing selected areas in the city of East Point where we can get vaccinations. Again, my prime, um, my priority is uh, the residents and also the neighboring cities as well. And uh, in doing that, I know when we were uh, number one last year, I don't want us to be number one again this year. So I just wanna uh, make sure I work on that and keeping uh, the communication going with our elected officials throughout. And I think we're gonna get better at that. And also, uh, thank you to all that cleaned up. I wasn't able to be there. I wasn't feeling, feeling my best. And welcome our city clerk. Uh, and all, everybody that's working out new and as well as Happy Mother's Day to everyone. Uh, you know, being a mother is hard. I have twin daughters, all you know that. And um, it's hard being a mom and a mayor and so many other things. But God has allowed me to do the job. And so uh, again, um, Mr. Councilman Curly, I hope you get better. Prayers. Uh, one person I know that has been doing his best not to come out was Councilman Curly. He'd never, whole last year and this year, he barely went anywhere. And he's been uh, always wearing his mask every time I see him. So, and you've been doing exactly what you need to do. So I ask Bishop Lloyd and also the community to pray for our councilman. Um, and um, I'll be definitely doing that. So uh, moving right along. So he can get his rest and so many others. Uh, can I get a motion for a German, please?
So moved.
For motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Minaj. Everyone have a good night and Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Everyone.